Okay, so welcome back. This is our, what do we call it? The follow-on meeting?
It's a continuation.
Continuation, sorry. Continuation from our Wednesday meeting, one item specifically, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. And, you know, thanks for everybody for being so flexible. I could see that, just the agenda and the topic and the content and what direction we're even going, just got, started going multiple directions on Wednesday. So this is really good to be able to get back together on Friday, more focused onto one item itself. And, you know, let's start at the top. It was an item on our agenda Wednesday and we'll just work our way through it. And Greg, you have an additional item too. Maybe if you want to talk about that start with, just to get that rolling. This was an email you had just sent us this morning, yeah, this morning?
Yeah, sure. For the record, Greg Monch, Chutes County Finance. And the one add-on agenda request for this morning is to, is asking the board for authorization for either the county administrator or for the CFO to sign the grant, the ARPA grant agreements as they come back in. And the reason for that is, the board, obviously, the grant agreements that are issued are following the board's authorization of use of ARPA funds that we are periodically going through. But we didn't ask for or specify how to sign those when they come back in. So it's a little bit of an administrative cleanup, just to make sure we have record on it, but we're asking, or I'm asking for that, for the board to consider that, and just a minute's motion would be super helpful.
Yeah, so let's follow through that clarity item right now. Did you get the email? Were you able to see it? So about an hour ago, okay. I've got a copy over here. And it just lays it out just like that. Who's got the assigning authority? We're having, you know, very public meetings, great discussion about each item that we're approving. Dave?
I just point out, with the CARES grants, you did authorize the county administrator's signature. So those all were signed by Tom. We didn't bring those back to you folks after you had awarded them. In the various public meetings, we just, we ran those through Tom Anderson for signature authority at that time.
So we already have examples of this same scenario?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts on this?
I'm supportive.
For county administrator's signature?
Or county CFO, either, either way.
Okay, either one.
The email I mentioned, either.
Yeah, so would CFO be the easier path then?
I think it would be best to have either.
Oh, yeah, either. Okay, there you go. Yeah, so both, that's fine. Yep. Are you supportive, Commissioner Dare?
Of course.
Okay. Looks like we'll be able to deal with it. So let's make it a minute's motion.
I move approval of either, I move board approval of either county administrator or county CFO signature for contracts related to ARPA allocation, funding allocations that have been decided by the board.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? So just one thought, you know, so these can be anywhere from, I don't know what our smallest one is, 10,000 or 50,000 up to a couple-
First one that just came in was $20,000 yesterday. So that was our first.
Okay, yeah. Up to a couple million dollars is my point. So, yeah, we're gonna see a big spread of how much these are signed for. But this will be that package, it'll be well accounted for, the spreadsheet, when these projects get implemented, if people understand, you know, some of these dollars are from the county and we'll be able to trace it back to every, every choice we made. Any other discussion? C-9, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, got some business done.
Thank you.
So let's start off, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. So this is on the topic of homeless outreach services. So as I say, we started this Wednesday and we started going, I don't know if it was different directions, but we just had lots of information being laid out. I had a discussion with Molly Wells-Darling yesterday and Colleen Thomas, and the request was that they kind of start off with their letter and their ask to explain how it, you know, supports Sisters in the Pine asks. So, you know, because we kind of kept going up and down that logic a little bit. Is that supported, to start off?
I think that's a great way to start.
Are there any other statements from where we're going or where we were, from the commissioners?
I'm still waiting to hear how many homeless we have in the pine.
Okay. Well, yeah, so let's, let's start off. So we're gonna have, yep. After a good sit-down yesterday, for myself, this is the concept. We'll start off with this ask from Health.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. Molly Wells-Darling, Program Manager for our Homeless Outreach Services through Deschutes Health Services. And we are here to discuss our ARPA request for an addition of three staff, two case managers and one peer, as well as funding for supplies and changing a coordinator to a supervisor and also a much-needed vehicle that is a safe vehicle for our staff. So as you know, the homelessness issue in our community, in our region, has increased by about 40% since 2018 and by 13% since 2020. Now, this is based on our point-in-time count, so we know that that's just a picture on one day, and we know that those numbers are larger. So the last point-in-time count, we had 1,099 individuals in the region who were homeless, and 90% of those were from Deschutes County. When we look at what we see, what Colleen's team sees and other providers see out in the community, we're seeing that right now, there's about probably an estimate of 1,000 campers in Bend alone.
So a little bit of clarity, when you say Colleen's team, let's get real clear. You know, because this is, this is where the facts kind of matter about.
Yeah, so Colleen's team is the homeless outreach team, and Colleen will talk a little bit about what her team does and how many they've served, et cetera, after-
Yeah, so let's just, yeah, make it, make that a point in the moment.
Yeah, yeah. So-
Molly, could you repeat that last statistic? So 1,000 homeless campers in Bend alone?
Yeah, the estimate right now is that there are 1,000, that's correct, 1,000 homeless campers in Bend alone. And then we average about 77 individuals a night at the warming shelter. And then in our higher barrier shelters at places like Bethlehem Inn, we average around 60 at night. So that's about 1,037 alone, just in Bend, that we can see and that we know about. When you look at who we are serving within Deschutes County Behavioral Health, we are serving about 855 individuals who have stated that they are experiencing homelessness at some point between December of 2000, December 31st of 2020 until now. Commissioner Dare, to answer your question, we don't have specifics overall of how many homeless are in the pine, but we were able to get the information on how many of our clients in the pine are experiencing homelessness. And right now, that is 44 clients of ours that are experiencing homelessness. So, you know, we can assume, of course, that that number is higher within, within the lapine area. Within Sisters, as we discussed on Wednesday, we have around 94 camps and about 110-ish individuals experiencing homelessness in the Sisters area. Let's see here. To break down the numbers, just for Deschutes County Behavioral Health, serving people who are homeless, we have, as I said, around 855, 44 of those are in the pine, 689 are in Bend, and 122 are in Redmond. So as you can see, from the numbers, this is a big number, not only just within our own agency, but then all of the individuals that are out there that we, we haven't been able to reach. Currently, we have two staff, Colleen and Katie. Katie is our case manager and does outreach into the camps, and Colleen will talk more about what Katie does specifically. And then Colleen is our coordinator through our CCBHC grant, and she does outreach, but she also does a lot of community education. She works with all of the different providers. She keeps all of us in this room informed as to what's going on with homelessness. So she's, she does a lot of that coordinating policy-type work. So with these two individuals, we are over capacity at this point in time. We do not have the ability to take on anything more. And this is an issue, given that we have rising rates of homelessness in, within Deschutes County. It's also an issue because we need services for all these wonderful projects that are being approved out there. So we have projects like the Bethlehem Inn. Thank you to all of you for giving money to the Bethlehem Inn to be able to open in Redmond. We have the Navigation Center, and we have Project Turnkey opening in Bend. And then we also may, you know, may have camps. It remains to be seen, I think, in terms of the discussions around camps. Without services, it will be more difficult for these projects to be successful. And right now, we have had requests, can Deschutes County Behavioral Health provide the services, just even for behavioral health and SUD for these different projects? And my answer at this point in time is, no, we can't. We do not have the capacity to do that within just these two members. So our hope is that we can get these positions approved so that we can help those projects be successful, so that we can continue to reach out into the camps with the ultimate goal of getting individuals housed. This team, just to clarify from other services out in the community, specializes in behavioral health and substance use. They have the special skills that it takes to engage individuals with those issues. So we have, we have a story of an individual that Colleen will tell you later, who wasn't able to engage because she was so frightened. She, and I'll let her tell the story because it's really a great story, and it was her work that ultimately helped this person get help. But it was because of her behavioral health expertise and then also because of their SUD expertise that we're able to engage these individuals and then ultimately move towards housing. And we'll talk a little bit about a program that we had for about six months that we had between May and November as well, where we were able to get some people housed. We know that the combination of, of being able to be in a shelter or being able to be in a permanent supportive housing with specialized case management like this is one of the main things that can get people out of homelessness and to maintain them outside of homelessness. The last bit of statistics I wanted to give you is related to our CCBHC program. As you know, we have our CCBHC program and we have specialized staff who also work with people who experience homelessness in our, in our county. Our baseline assessment of 504 individuals who, basically, 504 individuals were surveyed and asked if they had experienced homelessness within the last 30 days. 13% of those individuals who filled out this survey with our staff said, yes, they had. After six months of treatment with our services, that statistic fell to 4%. And after a year of treatment within our services, that statistic fell to 2%. So that shows you that being able to be engaged in a supportive manner with, with people who are specialized in behavioral health and substance use treatment really can and do make an impact. I'll let Colleen talk, and then we'll have any questions that you have.
Great.
I have a question right now. I believe you said your, your clients, we total, they total 855? Okay, so that's Bend, Redmond, and Lapine?
It's, it's all of our clients served anywhere. We got, when we were looking at the data, we couldn't dial down into Sisters for some reason, so we'll continue to look at that. But those were the stats that I was able to get.
I know, I was going like, okay, where's, where are the Sisters ones?
I know, yes, yeah. So the, so the stats that we have for Sisters are the stats that we did when the staff went out and canvassed, I believe with the Forest Service, and, and found there to be the 93 or 94 camps. 110. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Dare?
Right, I know, I was just like, okay, you know, the state lost 550 deaths, and I'm going like, you know, we're, the number, they're not all coming together, so I'm going, you know, I'm just wondering, are we not, wouldn't you call the people in Sisters, you're not working with them, they should, shouldn't they be part of the 855?
Of course. This is just a data-driven, how we're pulling the data, and so it probably, I mean, it could be related to many different things. That's something that we can probably build in within our epic system right now. It's probably based on the team, I know it's based on the team that has them open. We don't necessarily, we don't have a hub like we do in Redmond and Lapine.
What about, is there anyone from Terrebonne that's in this count?
Um, I didn't bring the specific stat, so I can get that.
I mean, I was just, you know, we're, we're trying to cover the whole county, so I just was wondering.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Part of our challenge with covering the whole county is that we only have two staff.
Yeah, right now, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Molly. So for the record, my name's Colleen Thomas. I am the Homeless Services Coordinator for Deschutes County Health Services. And so, as Molly mentioned, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have just in regards to what our current services, specific to those experiencing homelessness are for our county. Currently, as Molly mentioned, we do have a staff member. Her name is Katie DeVito. She currently serves under a grant, a SAMSA grant called PATH, which is Projects in Assistance in Transition Out of Homelessness. The county has had that grant for, I believe, over 15 years. And that is a state grant that works specifically with individuals that are experiencing literal homelessness, that have a severe or persistent mental illness and/or a substance use disorder. So her role is really to be in the community, meeting where, individuals where they're at, engaging with them, ensuring that they have access to entitlements, including health insurance, food benefits, applying for social security, with the long-term goal, of course, permanent supportive, stable housing. But over that time, and I think I've mentioned to all of you in past, in previous meetings, that sometimes, you know, working with individuals that do fall under that category is that it's a lot of, it's a journey, and we're walking that journey with those individuals to ensure that it is person-centered, that we are ensuring that those individuals are meeting their basic needs. So, again, her role is to be in the community. Currently, yesterday, I think Commissioner DeBon had an opportunity to go out to some of the camps with her. She does a lot of co-responding with law enforcement officers, other CBOs in our community, or we go out together if it is appropriate to engage with folks in the community that are needing additional support. Part of that is really just, again, ensuring that the individuals are having access to basic needs. And some of that is, hopefully, connecting with our Deschutes County Behavioral Health Team. And part of that is going through the assessment, as we know that sometimes accessing services can be really complicated and, and really kind of intimidating for some individuals. And so part of that role is to help them get to appointments, attend appointments with them, ensure that there's follow-up, and ensure that they're having access to applying for some of our housing programs, or accessing some of the limited resources that we have in our community, including the shelters. So that is mainly her role in the community. And then myself, as Molly mentioned, we were lucky enough to get the CCBHC grant this last year in 2020 that allowed for us to expand our team from one to two, allowing for really some coordination around all these projects and programs that are happening in our community that are so vital to the increase in, in individuals and numbers that are experiencing homelessness. So, again, we went from one, one staff member to two. And just to kind of go over, just a few more data points to mention in addition to what Molly mentioned is, so just in the last year, Katie alone, so, has enrolled 56 individuals in the PATH program, so meaning that those individuals identify as having an SPMI, severe persistent mental illness, or substance use disorder, or co-occurring, and that are willing to engage within our services. So those are 56 individuals in Deschutes County that she is providing daily, weekly engagements with and working on all those different services that I mentioned before. As you all remember, this last year, we had an extreme heat wave, and so, in August, and so Katie and I alone were out in the community over three days and connected with 135 unique individuals in the community to ensure that they were remaining safely in the community due to the, the high heat wave that we were experiencing. Just over this year, up until this date, Katie has also made at least over, well, let's see, at least 223 contacts with unique individuals in Deschutes County that also meet the definition of her program. And part of that, again, is it takes time. So we have contacts, we have engagement, and then we have enrollment. And so the real importance of this, this program and some of the work that we do are, are meeting individuals where they're at, ensuring that they are, their needs are being addressed on a person-centered approach. The story that Molly mentioned, I'll just briefly mention for all of you, and it's, it's unfortunately a case that is very common to us in Deschutes County. And I've been in doing this work for the last several years, there's many cases like this, but this one sticks out uniquely as an individual who was living in her vehicle and didn't have anywhere to park her vehicle. She went to the only place that she felt that she could be safe. And in that location, she, again, she worked with that specific agency to be able to remain safely in her vehicle at the, at that location. The people at, through that facility tried to attempt outreach to her, engage her, make sure that she had access to what she needed, talked about what, you know, that really, it wasn't, it wasn't a safe place for her to be, and what other options could she have? Many CBOs in our community attempted outreach to her, and it wasn't until our team was able to go out and connect with this individual that we were able to really build that rapport. We assisted her in connecting to both medical and mental health services. She did have a cancer diagnosis, and so we were able to help her get connected to medical providers that were able to address her, her cancer diagnosis. She was able to be connected to mental health services. And then we, in the long term, were able to get her into permanent housing, where she was able to reside. But that took a lot of intensive outreach daily, multiple times throughout the day to connect with this, this individual, ensure that she felt safe. You know, we're connecting with her family that she hadn't had contact with for years because of her diagnosis and the paranoia she had around family and other community members. So that, and that took time, but that took a really intensive case management and a different approach to be able to meet that individual where she was at. And again, as I said, that's, you know, a very common story that we experience in this work of really just being able to look at an individual from a holistic approach and really be able to address the underlying conditions that that individual has. If we weren't able to provide that outreach and make those connections, I fear that her cancer diagnosis would, would have gone unnoticed and she might have unfortunately passed in her vehicle where she was. And so we were able to give her dignity and respect in her life and really be able to build long-term relationship with that individual.
About Fuse as well?
Yeah, so another program that Molly had mentioned that we-
Thank you very much for that story and that effort. So that's a success story, and then Eric has some.
I just have a quick question, Colleen. What type of permanent housing, and could you give a quick summary of the steps it took to get her into that?
Yeah, so she actually was, we were able to, she ended up obtaining an apartment through a, a apartment complex through Epic Property Management that the county actually holds the waitlist for, called Emma's Place, which is specific for individuals that do have mental health diagnosis and that go through our waitlist through Deschutes County. So to be able to have access to that, she did have to go through our assessment for our housing team programs. And part of that was when we were able to connect with her and really address some of the mental health issues underlying that, we were able to get her into Sage View, which is our acute psychiatric facility, which then increased her vulnerability. And we were, through that, connect her to a mental health team that was able to do a referral to that housing program.
And that's a Housing Works project, right, Emma's?
Yep, Housing Works, I believe is a 14-unit permanent housing apartment complex that we have in the city of Bend, that Deschutes County holds the waitlist for.
And would you call that permanent supportive housing, or would you classify that differently?
So it is considered permanent housing. It's not considered permanent supportive housing because there are not the onsite services for that program, although we were doing the intensive case management and skills training onsite in her apartment with her.
Thank you.
But talking about permanent supportive housing, Deschutes County was lucky enough to partner with Fuse, which is the permanent supportive housing program here in central Oregon. Fuse stands for Frequent Users of Systems Engagement, is really targeted to individuals that are chronically homeless, that have high vulnerability and have high, high contacts with our law enforcement, our mental health system, our hospital system, and they're assessed through a coordinated entry system that really gauges what vulnerability those individuals have. And that was an eight-slot program, meaning that there was eight individuals being able to be, go through that process to access housing. Deschutes County, the homeless outreach team did contract with Fuse to be the service provider for that program. From May to November, we were able to successfully assess and house eight individuals that were chronically homeless with severe mental illness diagnosis into permanent housing. So that was a huge success. One of those families is a family that I had worked with for eight years, that was living on BLM land in Redmond, for almost eight years. And we were able to work with them, get them through this program of housing. They were able to get an apartment through Epic Property Management. Both of them are addressing medical, medical issues now. Both are now receiving social security. Their dog was able to get certified as a service animal and get some medical attention for the dog as well, and they're doing very, very well and very successful in their own housing right now, currently, and have access to their, you know, they've been able to build relationships with their family. And again, now that their crisis of housing and where they're gonna stay every night is taken away, they're able to address those underlying medical and mental health issues.
Since Colleen brought up the family that she worked with, I don't think I mentioned them. I think I missed it in my discussion, but from our point-in-time count, we have 46% of that 1,099 are families with children in our community. And 65% of that number are individuals who, this is the first time they've been homeless. So what that means for our community is, these are our neighbors that are losing their homes and becoming homeless in our area. I think it's important, a poignant point for all of us to keep in mind.
So one of the scenarios that we, I'd like to talk about a little bit, I mean, and it's, you know, kind of a rough reality right now, but substance use, substance use disorder. So we've decriminalized small quantities of, we've got homeless, homeless services, and we know of people that are struggling with substance use disorders, but it's not until they're ready would they take a step. I mean, we're not, nobody's forcing anybody to do anything anymore. Public safety isn't, health isn't, we just kind of document the situation. And I saw this yesterday, didn't meet the person, but it was explained to me. Yeah, I mean, can you talk about that a little bit? And it's, you know, so I kind of have part of the information here, but yeah, what's the outreach efforts for that? Because, as I say, I just think of it, it gets bad, and it's not until somebody hits bottom that maybe they're gonna, instead of criminalizing, incarcerating, you know, separating them from, from the, the bad situation, we're not doing that. We're just making a relationship, I guess.
Yeah, you know, and I don't necessarily think that our approach would be different for someone that has a severe or persistent, persistent mental illness versus a substance use disorder. We're gonna continue to show up and engage with that individual and talk about what are the barriers? What are those different issues that are, you know, limiting them to accessing treatment or getting out of their current crisis of, of their substance use? And oftentimes, we know, you know, that there is recurring situations with someone that might have a substance use that might lead to their rock bottom. Of course, we don't want to see that, but we also have to look at it as a systemic issue that we don't have enough resources, again, for individuals to access the treatment they may need in that moment. And so we continue to show up, we continue to meet those folks where they're at, and talk about how, what can we do in this moment to provide you safety and security with your current situation? I think that there's some great initiatives, and, you know, the county is working closely with some of our treatment providers, Best Care as well, to look at how do we increase the capacity to provide that first, a person-centered, low-barrier approach to people that are really struggling in our community? And unfortunately, it's a reality, it's a, it's a harsh reality that we have, and when we have, you know, as we continue to see the chronic homeless number of individuals in our community increase, a lot of that is due to some underlying issues that aren't being addressed, and some of that is substance use. And so that's, again, where our team, really from a behavioral health approach, is kind of addressing those underlying issues and talking about, you know, that motivational interviewing and, and harm reduction, really, to ensure that someone's remaining safely in the community until we can get them into the treatment services that they vitally need.
And it is this team, this, through behavioral health, that has that exact training. Motivational interviewing is a good evidence-based practice example that Colleen brought up. They're, they're skilled in being able to get people engaged when they're, when they're ready to be engaged, and move them through that process even to be ready to be engaged. So that's why it's so important that we have resources like Colleen and Katie in the community, because they're the ones that are trained and skilled to, to really assist these individuals with, with those issues.
If I could ask a follow-up question to better, I, I, we were talking about two populations and where they intersect. So there's people who have substance abuse, substance use disorders, there's people who are homeless. Colleen and her team, they, they work in the overlap in the Venn diagram, where, you know, people who are homeless who are, have substance use disorders, and you work with homeless, people who are homeless who have, you know, other, other issues. You know, Commissioner DeBon is expressing concern about, about, you know, how we address substance use disorders in our community, and it would be helpful for me to understand, if we're thinking about those overlapping populations, like, how big is the overlap? I mean, how many people are there who have substance use disorders who are homeless versus not homeless? How many people are there who- How many people are there who are homeless who have substance use disorders or not? You know, because the package we're talking about, it really deals with that intersection. You know, there are, if there are a large number of people who have substance use disorders who are not homeless, this package that we're discussing today, it doesn't, it doesn't deal with those people. And I mean, you know, we've got Molly and Janice here who may want to talk, you know, bigger picture about dealing with people who are not homeless who have substance use disorders. But I, you know, I want to, I want to, you know, be mindful that there is a certain amount of overlap, but these are not completely overlapping populations.
They are not completely overlapping, that's correct. So we have individuals for certain in our community that have substance use disorders that are not homeless. And in a minute, Janet can, Janice can talk a little bit about some work that's being done for that population. In terms of the population that we deal with, the individuals who are homeless and have substance use disorders, you know, one of the, one of the main things is, and you brought it up on Wednesday, housing first is really important. If we can have low barrier, no barrier, or housing-first models for this population, you often see people who can get into housing then be able to get clean. It's, it can be pretty difficult to get clean when you're out there homeless and running into all the different barriers that Colleen was talking about. And I was looking at a study this morning, and I think it's from Finland, a community member actually sent it to Colleen and I. And they went to a robust housing-first model for people who had SUD disorders and who also were homeless. Four out of five of those individuals maintained their housing. Once they were able to get into housing, they maintained their housing and were able to move towards sobriety. So in terms of the numbers, though, Colleen, do you have an assessment on that in terms of the homeless and SUD?
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point. And when we talk about, kind of coming back to the data, when we do the point-in-time count, that's kind of where we get our data points. I mean, I can talk a little bit about what we see in the community versus a snapshot of what a point-in-time account is, but when we ask those questions of reasons for homelessness or other demographics, other barriers that someone might have, it's often not self-reported from someone that they say that they have a substance use disorder. So when we talk about that or a mental illness, and so when we look at the data from that, you know, even federal lens, it's all self-report. And so we know that it's a severe undercount. I can say that when we go out in the community and we're engaging with someone, and I have made this comment before, we, we don't necessarily go up to someone and ask, "Are you hearing voices? Oh, you aren't, we're not going to help you today." We have a little bit more finesse in the way that we approach individuals. And sometimes we might be interacting with someone in the community that, you know, might not appear to have a substance use disorder, but they do, you know, that we're meeting people and seeing them for where they're at and where they present to us today. And so I think that that's just an important characteristic that we talk about, is that, you know, we, when we see, there's very visible individuals in our community that may be struggling with mental illness or substance use disorder, but there's a large population that also are struggling with those different barriers that aren't as overtly evident when you're, when you're interacting with them. And so to that point, I would say the folks that we're interacting with, over 80% of them probably have some level of underlying substance use disorder and/or mental illness.
So the people that you are providing behavioral health services to, but the overall homeless population, I mean, is, do you, do you have any kind of a feel for, you know, how many of those people are having, and I very much appreciate, you know, your explanation of, you know, there's not a whole lot of self-reporting on this, but I mean, it's, one of my concerns in the homelessness discussions we were having at the, at the policy level is, is a perception that, you know, you know, perceptions that all homeless people are, you know, having ment, you know, mental health challenges or substance use disorders, you know, that there's a, you know, people are often unwilling to recognize that, you know, we have, we have working, working people, we have families, we have unaccompanied children or unaccompanied youth out there. And so I want to, you know, one of the things I want to make sure I understand is just how common is substance use disorder in the homeless population overall?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and it's a really fair point and an important point, because again, we want to challenge some of those perceptions in the community because that isn't the overall population. In the overall population, I think what we see in Deschutes County that, I mean, it's a hard, it's a hard number to really identify for you, Commissioner Chang, but I would say probably about 30% of the overall population of those experiencing homelessness probably have, are struggling with a substance use disorder. And that, again, it's, and sometimes we don't, aren't engaging with, in defining what homeless definition we're looking at as well. But that is what my, my best guesstimate would be.
We won't, we won't cite you on.
Great, thank you.
So if we have another home, another couple homeless services staff people, they're going to have relationships with X amount of people out there. Success looks like one at a time moving them out. So the ask is for a million dollars. So, and you saw me go through this process yesterday, just how do, how do we take step one, two, three here to making a decision?
I have a question of what Colleen said. Colleen, I wrote down that you said over 80% were substance use disorder and mental illness. What, what were you referring to of that 80%? Because you just said 30% were substance use disorder. Are you saying that the 30% don't have mental illness, they're just substance use, they're just the drug users? And, but, so I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify your percentages.
Yep, so the over 80% or 85% that I mentioned are the folks that we are engaging with on a more daily or weekly basis. Those are the people that we are having contacts with, that I think that have a underlying substance use disorder or mental illness. And the reason why I say that is not 100% is because some of those people, we're not necessarily engaging, where we can do a full diagnosis of what is going on for them specifically. To Commissioner Chang's question, when I talk about the whole homeless population of people experiencing homelessness in our, in our region, whether that's Deschutes County or not, we're not engaging with all, we don't know all individuals experiencing homelessness. So when we look at that number, that I'm saying about 30% of those probably have a substance use disorder.
Okay. I remember we talked a couple of months ago at an event in Bend, and we were talking, like, both you and I were thinking the count was about 1,500 in the county. And I'm just wondering, has the count, have, has, have any of them moved south for the winter? Have we seen any, have we seen any traffic south? Do we, do we have any idea?
You know, I don't have any necessarily statistics on that, but we do have people, I mean, it is a transient nature of this population. We do see a higher numbers in central Oregon in the warmer months than we do in the winter months. We will have our point-in-time count in January that will hopefully get a little bit better sense of those numbers. And there's some movement to getting some more quality by name lists, quality data, that will have better statistics for you on that. I know that there's been a lot of movement within the population, especially in the city of Bend, just because of different events that have taken place. And so people have moved throughout the county quite a bit in trying to find a safer, or safe place to live. As far as going south, I have not heard of that necessarily.
Okay, well, so I was just going to, so this is a financial ask for three years for three people, plus supplies and a vehicle. And it's, it's going to be homeless services from the Health Department. It's going to be warm relationship, relationships with as many people as possible, really focusing on anybody who's ready to, for movement, stabilization and housing. There's an ask from the city of Bend, City Sisters in the Pine, sorry, two rural cities for this halftime person. So this is that ask that we're responding to, part of this. We've got, you know, X amount of people homeless right now. This is going to be a very meet you where you're at, warm support, and it doesn't, but it doesn't go very far, I guess, you know? So we're all, we're still stuck in that, that big picture of, you know, the Boise versus Martin versus Boise, and we're not asking anybody to go anywhere, we're just offering warm connections if you're ready to go somewhere. Just acknowledging where we're at and how much we're going to spend on that, because then we started to talk about legislative stuff yesterday of, maybe we asked the legislature for, you know, citing authority of some sort, say, okay, well, we need a location because we're not even getting close to asking somebody not to be where they're at. We're just going to come meet you where you're at. Just acknowledging that that's, that's, so the expectation of a city council may be, oh, you know, there's 100 people, how are we going to help move them, move them out? But we're not even getting close to that.
I think it's important to look at this, we need to look at this request both discreetly and in the bigger context.
And that's what I was doing.
There are, there are all sorts of questions in the greater context about, you know, where are we going to provide shelter, transitional housing, affordable housing? This does not address that, as you're saying. There are all sorts of questions about, you know, governance and whose responsibility? Addressing homelessness is, how do we pay for it? What's our plan, you know, what's our overall strategic plan? This proposal doesn't deal with that. And what's important, I think, to emphasize is that this request deals with what our core responsibilities are. So within the world of homeless, you know, tackling homelessness, providing behavioral health services to people who are experiencing homelessness is, there's no dispute that that is, that is one of our core functions, that is, that is part of our job. We have received a substantial amount of federal support to do that work, and I think that that's great. But, you know, setting aside these much larger questions of what is our overall comprehensive approach to homelessness, I think we need to recognize that the request before us is for our core activities, our core responsibilities as the, as the, what is the, what's the phrase? The authority, the local public, I mean, there's the local public health authority, but then-
Local health authority.
As the local mental health authority for, for this community, these are, these are our, this is our job. And we've heard from staff that the interventions that we are providing with the limited staff that we have are highly effective, and at, you know, tracking people out of homelessness into, you know, a new place, and that they could do more if they had more, more capacity. So I think, in my mind, that is a solid argument for supporting this proposal. Again, setting aside the bigger questions, which are-
Well, that's my point. We're not dealing with bigger questions here. We're going to be, do some warm outreach to people in their place, in, you know, wherever they're at, ready to take whatever steps they're at. And it's a very, you know, very loving and, you know, educational outreach opportunity for somebody who's ready, but there's a lot of people that aren't ready for anything.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of people who aren't ready for, there's a lot of people who aren't ready to move. The more people, the more people they-
The expectation of the city council is, is we're doing something, and we're going to do something, we're going to make warm relationships with a lot of people. I'm just acknowledging that. There's others elected, you know, bodies that are asking us to do something here, and I'm defining what we're doing. But, and that's what we're talking about today.
Can I add to, just to, just to that? Because I think, you know, when you look at these positions, yes, they're going to be going out into every community, so we'll have case managers stationed in every community and split between Sisters and the Pine, but there are also these services that will be going towards these projects that are coming. Project Turnkey is coming in Bend, and Project Turnkey is coming in Redmond. And so without these, we won't have the behavioral health services to help those two entities. So we do, so we do have places that are building up and providing more beds that will enable Colleen's team to engage with people in the camps and get these individuals to these shelters. And then also, this will be the, the services, the behavioral health and the SUD services for those shelters that are coming up as well, and probably the navigations.
And it's wonderful. I, as I say, as county commissioner, we've got this population that are dispersed camping and on the side of the road or whatever. We're going to offer them services, but I mean, there's just nothing real, there's no hard lines in there. And, you know, I'm just acknowledging that, you know, this is a step, but I don't know that, you know, some people may expect it to be more than it is. I'm trying to talk that through a little bit.
Next Tuesday, I was just talking to Gwen a minute this morning early. She said she's opening up with, I think, eight rooms or something, you know, she's, she needs to find another 300,000. Venting in the bathrooms was all totally not, not efficient, has to be, had to be replaced. So I'm just wondering, are the people that are funneling into the Redmond Turnkey Project through Bethlehem End, are they, are they already in, is there already an order of people that are going to be funneled in there? Have we already started doing that?
Yep, so actually, we heard a presentation this morning from Bethlehem in regards to what their process will be for referring folks to the Redmond Shelter. The hope is that they're having an inspection again today, that they can open up today. They're working with individuals at their current Bend Shelter that have connections to Redmond, that work in Redmond, so that it is, you know, not taking somebody out of their community to play, you know, to have them have access to a permanent shelter in a different community. And so that process is in, in the pipeline, if you will, and the process right now is to, for individuals that are wanting to access those beds, and while they work up their staffing, is to contact the Bend Shelter, and then the Bethlehem End staff will work with those individuals to really ensure what is the most appropriate referral for them at that time.
Okay. And I just did have a question about, you were asking for a vehicle, a new vehicle for 60,000. It just so happened this week, my son sent me a pickup pricing at like 47,000. So what is it you're wanting to get that's 60,000? I mean, I know vehicles right now are really extremely high, there aren't that many of them available. So what is, what is it you're looking for that's 60,000?
We were looking for, we met with our operations team about the cost of the vehicle. So I think that that, you know, obviously, we would try to find something less expensive if we can, but we're looking for a four-wheel drive truck that's a crew cab that also has area in the back so that we can have storage of supplies in the back of the truck as well.
Okay.
If it's okay with the commissioners, I just want to back up a little bit. I think it's really important to understand that these are skilled positions that we're proposing be hired. So this, yes, of course, they are doing warm outreach and engagement activities because that's what any behavioral health professional is trained to do as a way to connect with people that, that most folks in the community probably don't know how to talk to and feel uncomfortable talking to. So that's a core skill we have. But these are case management roles. So they are doing skill building, they are doing resourcing and referring of people, they are doing assessments in the field, they are walking alongside individuals, helping them get connected, and offering other skilled services. And it's really critical to know that they're part of a behavioral health continuum of services at Deschutes County. So when you have these folks working with folks who are experiencing homelessness, they're also connected to all of the resources we have in-house. The other thing I think sometimes gets lost in the conversation is, you know, the community for, for probably really good reasons or unfortunate reasons has a picture of homelessness in this sort of monolithic way. They see encampments. Colleen's team is working with people that are not housed in all sorts of situations. They may be in a motel, they may be living with a relative in a really unsafe situation where their substance use can't be addressed because everyone in the household is using. They may be in and out of homelessness, they may be in their car. And they're often being seen by the Crisis Stabilization Center or by our early assessment, our ESA team. So this team is doing core work with all of the other clinical teams that connect people to psychiatry, additional services, and housing, and is really focused on those people experiencing homelessness that have mental health disorders and/or substance use disorders. So I just, I just want to keep the focus on the population we serve, what we're trying to accomplish on behalf of those individuals. And frankly, that population has grown significantly in part as a result of the pandemic and all the- Uh, and all the sort of sequelae that came from that in our community. Uh, the needs have grown and I'm concerned about our ability to do what we basically must do for our mentally ill individuals if the team remains the size it is. Um, so I, I just want to be sure we're, we're keeping this within the scope of what we do and understanding there's this whole backdrop larger conversation, um, that has to be addressed in other settings, frankly.
And, yeah, I'm just trying to kind of acknowledge that this is a subset of.
It is a subset.
This is just, yeah, I mean, this is, this, that's exactly where I was going with this. I mean, this is, this, yeah. So a couple of examples of what I saw yesterday, I just, you know, thinking that. Um, one gentleman was from Clamath Falls, worked fire, uh, summertime fire events. Came home after the summer and his girlfriend had moved to Bend to be homeless. That's what they said, oh, we moved to Bend to be homeless. Uh, so that they, they're just here. So he followed her here and they're just, and they're not even together now. So he's, he's out there by himself. Now the gentleman's, uh, his winter plan is to be in the front seat of his car. When he gets cold, he turns on the, uh, engine and stays warm. Uh, and he's just got to make sure he gets his something checked and, uh, go get some gas when he needs it. Tried to, we tried to explain him the, you know, the day there's six or eight or 10 or 12 inches of snow out there, you're not going to be able to drive. And he was from Iowa. He moved here just because somebody, he had heard somebody. These are just the people I met yesterday afternoon. Another gentleman lost all of his documents. He's just kind of lost, so I mean, that's real tangible. Well, let's get your birth certificate and get you going here. He was kind of half in and half out of even wanting to do that, but he knew what he needed to do. So that was an interesting situation. Uh, and then, as I say, the S U D person that, um, I didn't meet, who wasn't there, but the, the message was, yeah, we know who she is. She's struggling mightily, but she's not asking for help. So we're not doing much for her until she's ready. Uh, so, you know, those are four examples of people I saw yesterday. So, you know, out of those four, if we hire one person and they keep warm relationships with all four of them, you know, maybe we're going to get documents for one and he could find a job and hopefully get going. Uh, you know, that, it's interesting, that catch 22 about motivation and where they're going to go. So I'm not judging, I'm just trying to digest it.
Yeah, I just, what I would, what I would, what I would say to that is don't forget about shame. And that what people tell you, Commissioner, as an elected official.
Oh, and I don't know, I was just, Joe Guy standing there. We were with Public Safety, but, yeah.
Sorry, but, but what they're telling you about their choices is a way to try to hold on to dignity. And my, my guess, uh, is that anyone who's telling you that in their good judgment, living in the front seat of their car in the middle of winter is a, is a good plan may in fact have some underlying conditions that we could illuminate by building some connection with that individual and connecting them to services. So I just.
Oh, no, I'm fully aware of that. And I did not introduce myself as commissioner. I mean, uh, we were there with Public Safety and homeless services. But, uh, yeah, no, I was just Tony, the guy standing there, just saying hi, trying to communicate.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I, I also just wanted to emphasize that, 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 uh, your experiences yesterday are a snapshot in time. And as someone makes content, you know, it, it, it often takes multiple contacts with someone before they open up to you and are receptive to, to what you have to offer or what you're, you're hearing. And, uh, I mean, the, particularly the fourth example you mentioned of the, the person who's experiencing, you know, uh, substance use disorders. W- w- one of the things, you know, it may take a couple of times before that, that person is, is interested in, in talking about, you know, what they're experiencing and, and working on it, may never happen. It, but it, it might, it might. And, um, you know, one of the things that I, I was speaking with Janice with about a few weeks ago that I, I, I found pretty interesting and I wanted to ask to kind of, all the three of you, uh, potentially to elaborate on is kind of the, uh, what we know about people cycling in and out of substance use disorders and coming out of it. Um, you know, so I, I know that there, there's, you know, that, that people sometimes experience, you know, they have substance use disorder. They were able to, to, you know, get sober for a while, you know, they may have a relapse. But, um, kind of in, in like a, you know, like looking at it longitudinally over time. You know, what are, you know, what are the statistics around people working their way out, uh, at a certain point? And, you know, because that, that is a backdrop for what we need to discuss is basically, you know, if, if there is a pathway for, for someone to work their way through and out, you know, maybe it's one step forward, two steps back, two steps forward, one step back for a while. But if there's an, an end, an endpoint where they work their way out, uh, you know, part of our question is what are we willing to invest to support that process happening?
So, um, what we know, so I'll start with the good news. What we know is that most people with addiction recover at some point in their lifespan. And this is why we work so hard to save lives with harm reduction efforts, with homeless outreach, with substance use treatment, and why many of us hang in there with people year after year after failures. We know that relapse and recurrence of either mental illness or substance use condition is part of recovery. So our commitment is to, um, work with those folks until they really recover for a extended period of time. So that's the good news. Um, the, the downside is yes, we experience that people relapse. Um, a good, you know, another kind of comparison, and this is another way that people become homeless, is looking at intimate partner violence situations. We know that many women who are in extremely violent relationships leave those relationships five or six times before they leave permanently. Many of those times when they leave, they end up unhoused. And, uh, it's a very similar dynamic. The, the systems that you need in place to get safely out of addiction, safely out of mental illness, safely out of violent situations, or a family that's unsafe is safe housing and adequate supports. And that's what we try to provide with these services. I don't know if that was responsive to your question, but.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the, your, your very first point was a direct answer to my question. That the majority of people who experience, uh, substance, uh, addiction, uh, will work their way out of it. Uh, that's, you know, eventually. I, I mean, if you, if you want to elaborate on any, at all on that, I'm kind of like.
I mean, that.
You know, how long that can, you know, how, how fast or how, how fast that can happen or how long it might take, you know.
It depends on, um, I, I would love to come back sometime and talk with all of you about adverse childhood events and what we've learned about trauma history and the kinds of choices people make. Because we talk a lot about choices, but we sometimes don't understand what goes into the stew. Um, and we know now from huge population studies that exposure to childhood trauma, loss, abuse, harm, um, actually results in the trajectory of people's life choices looking very different as they enter adulthood. That has a profound impact on how people recover from and how quickly they recover from addiction or violence or mental illness. It's, uh, it's very much a part of that story. So anytime you would like to have me come back and talk about that, I'd be happy to do it. Um, what I can say is that it just depends. It depends on their pre-morbid functioning. It depends on how quickly they connect to resources. It depends on how much damage they've done to their physiological, their spiritual, their psychological system in their addiction, um, how quickly they recover. And I understand that the community gets fatigued with this cycle. That we see the outward evidence of what that can look like in a life. And it's hard to see and hard to understand and can be exhausting for communities trying to deal with it. Um, people like Colleen and the people who work with her, they, they power through that fatigue and stay hopeful. And the result is that, uh, lives are saved and people are rescued out of those situations. And, and those are really the services that we are trying to support with, with the proposal. And, and lots of other times we come before you, so.
So, I mean, that, with that, uh, I, you know, with that long view, uh, you know, I just want to emphasize that if, if you go out on a site visit and in that snapshot in time, you don't necessarily see a substantial amount of progress. Like on that one day, it doesn't mean that it's not coming.
Uh, I would, um, as an experienced adult with a lot of interactions in my life, I see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dare.
Well, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, um, talked to Rimrock this morning. And they are hoping to open their youth center in Prineville. But of course they are having problems still, you know, with staffing. But they've got a new theory going, a new, uh, plan they're implementing in order to, you know, get that staffing. So, you know, that's, that's something that our area truly needs. It's, it's for teenagers, younger people. And I was really glad to know that they are a part of it. But then again, I heard the story at Thanksgiving that there was a homeless person sitting in front of a really, really nice hotel in Seattle. And they offered the gentleman a, an apartment. They had an apartment for him, et cetera, et cetera. And he kept refusing it. So, you know, we've got that issue. And then this week I heard from someone in, that was driving through Bend and they were attacked in their car by some homeless people. So, you know, there are all these sides to what we're dealing with. And truly, you know, it's, it's an overwhelming problem. And the fact that if we've gone up actually to fifteen hundred individuals in our county, I think that's, um, you know, it's a daunting task for the team. And I'm just wondering, adding these people to the team, are those people all then licensed? Remember that license that I kept talking about, you know, that only twenty people had? Or will these hires all have that license already? Because I know it's really, you said it was, took a couple of years to get it otherwise.
Uh, our intent is always to hire people that have a C A D C, always. They are few and far between. Um, we have, uh, just implemented with your support and we're very.
Could you explain that? Uh, I, I remember hearing about that too.
Yeah, it's the Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor, uh, credential or certification or, yeah, Certified Drug and Alcohol.
Counselor.
Yeah. Sorry, the acronyms, I get lost in them too.
There, there's too many.
A lot of them.
You let it slip right by, but yeah, let's talk.
Yeah, yeah. It is a credential that allows someone even who doesn't have a master's degree to do things like a quick substance use disorder screening and provide substance use disorder services to individuals in any number of settings. So the intent would be to recruit for people with a C A D C because that population really needs, uh, people with those skills. And we don't always get those individuals. Now we have an incentive package. In fact, one of my chores for today is to send an email to all staff to remind them that we have an incentive package that was just approved by the union and by the commissioners to incentivize people to work towards that credential.
I mean, I think that is so important, and especially when you consider the percentage of people that, you know, are either drugs, alcohol, whatever, that are homeless. And if you're going to work with them, you've got to find a way to do it. And, and then where really can we, where can we send them? I mean, to get help for alcohol, where, where can you send someone in Deschutes County that has an alcohol issue?
You can send them to us.
Okay.
Send them to Best Care.
Best Care does it?
Absolutely. Best Care, in fact, is probably the provider of choice locally for outpatient drug and alcohol services. They provide our detox, they provide Brooks Respite. Um, Rimrock does it. Um, oh gosh, Pfeiffer and Associates, uh, I believe, uh.
Serenity Lane has an outpatient here.
And Driscie as well, does some substance use disorder. There are a number of outpatient panel providers in addition to the county and Best Care who provide substance use disorder treatment.
Okay, because I just know that the problem is bigger than the three of us.
It's.
Yes.
Maybe.
But then again, you have the problem where if somebody doesn't want help, you know, how many days would you, Colleen, how many days would you go up to that gentleman at that really, I mean, that nice hotel and just say, you know, clearly he has a mental health issue, I would think. And, um, you know, create a relationship. But, you know, this was in Seattle. You know, Seattle has had such an issue for a long time. And I'm, I'm wondering how come no one in Seattle has been able to, um, move that man into housing?
Yeah, and, and not knowing the circumstance, I mean, from, I can speak from personal experience. Uh, my, my approach would be to continue to show up to meet with him as much and often as he would be willing and allow me to do so. Um, because it's repetition and it's continuing to show up and to say, I'm still here even if, if you aren't wanting what I'm offering to you. But to remind you that this is a resource for you. And hopefully over time that that individual, you know, we can address what, what some of maybe the fears are of accessing housing. And maybe if it's not the housing that's being offered, what else can we offer you that might not be the mainstream, what we think you need? But what is it that you think you need?
Well, that sounds like scenario of the gentleman that passed away here in South Bend last year, a year and a half ago. I mean, he was offered services many times, right? I mean, I don't know if.
Oh, the man who was the paraplegic?
Yeah.
Um, yes, he was offered housing, yes.
But can you, uh, can you offer us a counter example of, you know, someone who you had to come in contact with a number of times, but who suddenly that, that day came when they said, oh, you know, I'm ready to do something.
That was the example earlier too.
Yeah, I mean, I have probably many, many examples. I think one of the ones too of, you know, the family, the, the couple that was living on B L M land in Redmond. You know, time after time, you know, hey, we have an opportunity for a shelter bed or we could get you into these other programs. And there was hesitation because, you know, there are, these are mainstream, um, benefits and different things that, you know, there was hesitation. What, what do you expect from me as I go into that? But it took eight years and finally, you know, and I think there's also a fear of, you know, oftentimes we show up and say, well, somebody wants something right then and there. And if we can't provide that right then and there, there, there is hesitation and there's, um, there's different issues that we need to overcome. But to, you know, the, the example that Commissioner Dare mentioned is that's the importance of why we continue to show up and say, even though we don't have that, we're going to continue to show up and figure out what, how can we connect you to what it is that you do need. And so it might take eight years, it might take six months. But over time, we're really able to kind of meet folks where they're at. And hopefully, you know, and it might take six months to get off a housing waitlist. And so it's important to continue to show up.
Thank you.
So next question, is there any statistic opportunity here that could be shared with the commissioners? Even if it's not public information, uh, you know, just outreach's successes? You know, because I was out there yesterday and they're like, oh yeah, remember that time we did this and it was such a huge success? We don't hear about it. And, you know, these are personal, private information possibly, you know, there's not a whole lot you do want to talk about sometimes in public. But, uh, we need to know some of that because, you know, the headline is person passes away in Bend and, and the community, you know, and then judgment happens. You're like, well, wait a minute, you know, he was offered services how many times? So, yeah, I mean, it would be helpful to either have a, you know, public report or at least a, you know, a generic report in the public with more information for the commissioners possibly. Because this is, this is the topic of the day that we're, we're seeing. It wasn't like this just a few years ago. We've always had a transient dispersed population, but all of a sudden, uh, you know, just like our experience with East Redmond. I remember as staff, uh, we were closing gates and putting boulders up all over the east side of Redmond. That was a, a horse trail recreation area. And all of a sudden it's been taken over and the, the gate, gates get, um, you know, run over and broken and taken out and the rocks get moved and multiple times. So it, it was aggressive. So it changed just recently.
I think the statistic that Molly, um, talked about earlier, and it's really just a first look when we were looking at our, um, smaller C C B H C expansion grant population. And we use a tool to track homelessness with that and a number of other things. And we did see a distinct decline. Actually, I was surprised by how big of a drop, um, in homelessness for the small population we were able to follow over time. You know, we're not, the, the struggle we always have, um, in an organization like ours is we're a service organization, not a research organization. So often we, we, we know that people want to know what is the evidence that this works? And to really create that meaningfully, sometimes you have to be willing to set up a study population and, you know, deny services to some people and provide them to others and see where you end up. And that's research. We don't get to do that, we just have to serve. Um, but I do think that that survey data was very promising. It was surprising to me. It was a significant drop in homelessness for that small population. And, um, I hope to expand on looking at that. Uh, that will still be one of the things we measure if we apply for the expansion grant again in this cycle and, and get it.
What year was that, Janice?
That was for the, the period from two thousand eighteen through the extension of the expansion grant, which ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And we had, uh, thirteen percent homelessness. It went down to, I think the three, it went down to two percent at the end.
After a year of treatment initially, yeah.
Yeah. So we, I, I acknowledge those are really valid questions, Commissioner. It's sometimes a struggle for us to get that data easily as a service agency, but, um, we, we work towards that.
Well, I, I mean, so as a, you know, budget authority person, here, here's a million dollars and I hope it went to something positive. I mean, that's the conundrum right there.
Well, we're certainly willing, and we've had to do this as part of writing grants. We're certainly willing to say, what would look like success to you? And develop some things that we measure that matter and are meaningful, um, and report back to you. back to you. I mean, that's, that's our commitment to you always, that we're willing to tell.
Well, this is for the community. I mean, it's not just me, it's us.
Right, well, you represent them.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, you know, I'm just trying, yep.
Yeah, we are happy to do that, as long as we're measuring things that mean something. We don't want to do meaningless widgets.
Well, I know, and that's, oh, I agree. I mean, that would be bad if you're like, three hours a day doing paperwork, two hours a day out in the field, and the rest of the day, you know, trying to put fuel in the vehicle and trying to get ready for the next day, and then we don't have much. I know.
Well, you look at the million dollars that the community all came together and spent on Veterans Village, that's, you know, transitioning with 15 homeless veterans. And hopefully, within two years, they'll transition and more of them can come in. But we definitely, you know, we've heard from Lapine that they would like that same program. And, you know, someone I'm working with in Redmond wants to provide that program, some land where he bought. So truly, we've got to get the transition. And then, you know, the opioid overdose number, remember, in 18, the number was 70,000, and that was horrific, and now it's over 100,000 of opioid overdoses? All these other things that have happened through this pandemic that really are quite overwhelming. I just feel like we've got to, we've got to start making some kind of, you know, progress and to hear back. Okay, so if we start working with someone, we actually got, you know, we actually got three people placed this week or this month or whatever, you know, we are making a dent and people are, they're ending up in a much better and safer place because winters are seven times more dangerous. And we truly are going to have winter someday soon, right?
Someday. We're hopeful.
So I would, so I would hope that we could have some kind, we could have some kind of regular checking about this? And, you know, I don't, I don't want to track, I don't want to track what you're doing week to week. But, you know, at like six-month increments or year increments, if we could have, you know, some evaluation. And I don't know exactly what that looks like. It might be the, you know, an expansion of the survey that's already been completed, or it might be some other methods. Or it might be just some kind of, you know, kind of output metrics of what you've done. But I think that would be, that would be a helpful piece of the package to have, to be able to hear back on progress.
Yeah, I think the survey would lend itself.
Colleen and I have talked about some, some other tools that we could utilize as well as, and things that we would like to track. So we absolutely, we would, we would like to do that.
Yeah, I think that's the goal. I mean, we, you know, we also want to be good stewards of the money and responsive to the community because homelessness is at the forefront of a lot of these conversations. And, you know, when, as we've written grants to expand our program in the past, we've mentioned different matrix tools, you know, one of which is the self-sufficiency matrix tool that Bethlehem End uses with their residents is an easy tool that we, it does go over, you know, 30-day increments. We could do it at six months, and that's easy enough for us to do. And we are currently doing it with our enrolled clients through the PATH grant as well. So there is some of that that we could be, really easily implemented and report back. You know, we are here to, you know, to provide that information to you and answer any questions that you may have as, you know, this issue is going to continue to increase over, as we've seen, so.
So, Colleen, my question is, this point in time count that the government has set up in January seems to be, you know, like, okay, what if we're in a blizzard? You know, it's so impacted. I really, knowing the count at Hahnell Road was 35 in January, it was 85 Memorial Day, and it went up to 111 now, someone who does accounting for me, I would hope that we could maybe, you know, if it's not too expensive, do a count in June and see, okay, we've got our January count, and it seems like that takes months to get that number out. But then maybe do a follow-up count. Are we actually, are we spending millions of dollars and are we making a difference? Because in six months, I would hope that we would be making a difference.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point. And I know we've had that conversation in the past of wanting to do another account. The Homeless Leadership Coalition just recently was selected as a new cohort. If you aren't familiar with the Community Solutions Built For Zero, it's where the function, the theory of meeting functional zero as a community, meaning that we have enough resources in our community for all those experiencing homelessness. So we just recently launched in that cohort to be a part of this nationwide movement for Built For Zero, which started in November. And so part of that is creating a quality by name list, so meaning that we are going to have real-time data of all individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. Again, real time. And so where are those people experiencing homelessness in our community? What services are they accessing? And where are they moving throughout the community? So that we know the stories behind those individuals, not just a one-time snapshot that happens, you know, in January, which we know is just a severe undercount.
Yeah, it's just, it really, it's, it's just not impactful enough.
The other thing about that, because that question, it's a good question. It always comes up on why in January. From some research I did was, was that's when shelters are full. In the warmer months, people are more dispersed, and it's actually harder to count. But it certainly would be useful information. But that's, that's one of the things I've learned about why in January.
So Commissioner Adair, we're getting down to the ask from Health very specifically. As you see, I'm working my, my way towards yes. I'm just.
So you want to fund it for three years?
Well, as I say, generally, let's figure out what we want to do. You know, this is my point.
Right. I know. I, I'm just hoping they can find the people that will take these positions, which is, seems to be pretty difficult in this job market. But I don't know, two years. I mean, I know if you're saying it's a short-term position, then it's really harder to get someone to take it. So that's, that's the one thing that I, you know, go three years.
This is three years, so then there's a, you know, magical grants out in the future to extend a program like this, or an ask from the general fund or other, you know, funding opportunities. So that's coming back to a budget hearing near you someday. And, you know, the Health is amazing. I mean, it does, it just keeps growing. And we've just heard that we're going to have an ask for pandemic support and relief, COVID, big dollar asks coming from Health. And, you know, what's the right size, what's the right investment? We do have growth in the county, obviously, in population growth. On this topic, homeless services, outreach, management, the Joint Office of, I mean, we've got a lot of work to do in the next.
Well, yeah, the homeless population probably grew by 400 if you take it at 1,100 in January to now.
Yeah, and it's important to recognize that that is, it's not just something we're experiencing locally. At the state level, the, the rate of homelessness is increasing. At the national level, the rate of homelessness is increasing. There are the factors that, the factors that produce homelessness are national in scale, state in scale, local in scale. And so it's not, this is not something that we're just going to like, oh, well, it'll work itself out here at the local level in a couple of years if we just kind of let it be. It's, this is, this is with our country, our state, and our community for years to come. And we have the opportunity through this project, this proposal or this request, and through the bigger picture, to put a dent in it. And so I, that's why I'm supportive of these, this request as forwarded to us for $1,065,000 for a three-year period.
Is that a motion?
Are we, are we ready? I mean, I want to let, I want to let everyone talk through all their questions, you know, voice all their concerns before, before I make a commotion.
Do you think there are more than 44 in Lapine homeless? I, you know, I've asked someone that I.
Oh, yeah. No, it's just birth camping, yeah, up and down Darlene and Arline roads, and there's people all over.
I know that the Darlene fire was started by them, and they do.
I would assume that 100 number, you know, so.
Okay, because I was thinking, okay, if we only, if we have 110 and we're talking one employee for only 200, you know, it seemed, anyway. Okay, I just want to be sure there are more there, that we're not overfunding one side of the position and the other behavioral health specialist is going to have a bigger group of people to work with.
And the service will be in Bend also, correct? I mean, this is for the county. This isn't, you know, there's an ask by half F T E by the City of Lapine and City of Sisters. This is countywide outreach and support.
Correct. And that 44 is the number of individuals enrolled with behavioral health services that are homeless. So there's, it's definitely a much higher number out there. And yes, these case managers and peers will go around the entire county. But we'll also have them stationed in different areas of the county so that they're there rather than right now they're stationed in Bend and have to travel, et cetera.
So, yeah, as I say, the observation is this is a small, warm outreach effort for people that are ready for help. This really doesn't ask anybody to not be settling in long-term on public lands around the cities. Doesn't really, you know, draw any hard lines for anybody at this point. I mean, it's a step, and it's a wonderful step, obviously, but, you know, how much of this investment is going to be able to be, you know, leveraged with the other housing opportunities coming online? There's this concept, the Joint Office of Homeless something, I don't know whatever that's going to be. And you've got a strategic plan coming out, which, I mean, maybe we need to be talking about that. That's part of this.
We have a, you know, a strategic plan coming out.
Well, yeah, so you're representing the county, and I'm, yeah, I'm ready to get engaged in that, whatever it is, is my point, so. And, yeah.
Actually, in.
Because if this is, pardon me, this is a million-dollar asking, oh, yeah, we've got another $5 million here and $10 million there. It's going to be great if we spend all this money. Okay, so I don't know what's.
No, I, we definitely need to have a much broader discussion about those broader questions. You know, to me, this is a matter of our core responsibilities as the local mental health authority. And, and an opportunity to, to have a real impact. I mean, we, we understand, you know, we've heard about the survey, we've heard some specific stories that we can extrapolate from on what kind of an impact our behavioral health homeless outreach team can have on this problem. And, and so I, I very much appreciate that we, there are a lot of larger-scale, broader discussions that need to be had. But, you know, just focusing in on this, this specific request, this is, you know, this is our job. This is something that we know has an impact and is effective. And I think it's completely appropriate to expand and to make this kind of an investment.
So, yeah, I mean, I, let's fund this. I'm not opposed to just giving this the runway for three years, but, yeah, let's, let's take some good time. I mean, what about, you know, public and, I don't know, could we ever have an executive session, kind of like the MCAT handoffs where you're talking about names and what happened in the last 12 hours, by name, by activity and the thing? Could we ever do that in an executive session, just to get a better feel for what's going on? You know, the public health or private health information?
Yeah, I mean, there might be a way to find that.
Well, we could do it individually, too, I'm just.
Mental health or public health board, but I'd have to look at that. That'd be kind of unique.
I'm just thinking out loud about, you know, if, if we just wanted to get up to speed, what happened in the last six months? And some of it could be very personal information. That's why I would say that.
Identifiers, you know, client two, client X, something like that, but.
So then we do it in a public meeting and a work session for the world to hear, too.
Well, and, yeah, again.
I think the world would like to hear it.
Oh, yeah. But, and I was just trying to figure out what would.
And, you know, some of the kind of like semi-annual or annual reporting we're talking about, you know, the evaluation, I think that's a great answer to the question of anything like, well, the, you know, the press picks up on these sensational incidents that happen, but, you know, are they tracking, you know, the day-to-day work to put a dent in this problem? And I think that's a, you know, those sessions are a great opportunity to, to, to put the proactive story out there about the, you know, the work that this team is doing every single day to impact this problem.
So, yeah, I'm ready for a motion if we want to proceed here.
Okay. I, I move approval of allocation of $1,065,000 of American Rescue Plan funding for a three-year period to support homeless outreach countywide services. As proposed in this request.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? So I will add that, yeah, there's a discussion of a joint office something, legislative discussion, a navigation center. You know, we've heard about, you know, historical facilities, the Multnomah facility that was the place for people for almost 100 years. We maybe have to do some big structural changes in the state of Oregon. Land use puts us in a box, and I know that's different opinions on that, but I think there's some common ground about, you know, where is that, that Martin versus Boise location? And how can we get there? You know, so there's some big discussions there, too. So I'm just pointing out the other parts of this that we're not getting to today. Anything else, discussion?
No, I do want to make a motion after this one for the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter because they did lose the one church. And I'm not quite sure what that community is going to do, but I wanted to give them, like, minimal funding, like $10,000, just so they know that they can, like, find something to, in case we have a cold March, April, you know.
So that's a different topic.
Right, after this one.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that.
All in for the vote, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
And Commissioners on that.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gets to be a pretty narrow path sometimes.
No, we really appreciate the, you know, they're smart questions, they're hard questions. We appreciate it, and we are happy to come brag about our work.
Oh, yeah, come brag. That's what we want to hear, yeah.
No, I really want to hear it, like, at least every six months. I mean, maybe even, you know, and if you have something really to brag about, come sooner because we're, you know, we're spending a lot of money. And I look at it, we're spending money, and we're not spending money on rooms or anything. You know, we did that. We're going to have 88 rooms in Redmond, but it hasn't quite opened up yet. So it just makes me nervous. I don't want people, you know, getting them somewhere positive would really be helpful.
We'd be happy to come back in six months. It'll probably take a little time to hire. Although these positions should be easier to hire than our B H S two positions.
So do you think we need to offer housing? I mean, I, no, really, no, I meant really, if you want the right people to work the job. And, okay, so what if we said, okay, we've got a month of housing for you or something? I mean, housing is so tight here. How do you get someone to move here?
Well, let me say that H R has been working with us on, within the rules of pay equity, on occasion helping people with moving and housing costs as a way to, it's not a hiring bonus, but it's a way to offset some of the difficulty of coming to this area. We've been very grateful for that flexibility. We think it's smart, and we think we're going to be able to hire these positions relatively quickly, honestly.
I mean, I was just at St. Charles for the infusion, and there were like 10 nurses there, and they were all basically from Florida. And they're put up in hotels. And I'm thinking, how much is that costing? But, you know, to get people, and actually, we want people to start sooner than later. So, good, I'm glad to hear that, Janice. Thanks.
And we saw our neighbor Jefferson County buy a, buy a home and offer it as part of the compensation package or, or, you know, relocation, you know, transition support for people who they're trying to hire. So we may need to keep up with the Joneses.
The Jeffersons in that case.
The Jeffersons, there you go.
Okay, so Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Ballot number two.
I, I do believe that we should allocate. I was looking, they were asking for $50,000 for three years. I know this year is pretty well-covered, but if we could at least offer them $10,000 to help with assisting, they definitely need something. Weather can be bad, February, March, April, you know.
So who, who writes who a check? So does she, a hundred dollars to who?
I, I think this should go through the city. You know, that's where the letter came from. Support for, well, they're supporting it. I don't know. Or do you go the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter Operations? They're the ones that had the problem with their financing, and they were asking the city to do their financing, so.
They're the, they're the ones, okay, so a little clarification on that. They have the capacity to do their own books. They asked the city if they would do it for them to save them money, which is, in my mind, a strategic thing for a nonprofit to do. But it doesn't mean that they don't have the capacity to do their own books themselves. But it doesn't mean that they don't have the capacity to do their own books themselves. What I, what I've heard from, you know, first off, the Sisters Warming Shelter Board are the people who run the warming shelter. The warming shelter does not happen without the people who operate it, the service providers. Um, and what I've heard from them is that, uh, a, a chunk of, you know, a small chunk of money to rent space may or may not be helpful, um, for what they need. They, the, the two months of, of church space that they do have, um, is, uh, they don't have to pay for that. So if churches are, are, are willing to sign up to host the winter warming shelter, they're not asking for money. So throwing 10,000 or 50,000 dollars on it may not be helpful. Um, it, it might, I mean, you know, there's a, there's a possible scenario where, uh, you know, they, they say, hey, we could, we could lease this space for a couple of months and, and, you know, we need 30,000 bucks or, or, or whatever. But we haven't heard that from the Sisters Warming Shelter Board, the people who operate the warming shelter. Um, so, uh, they have said that they want to come back to us with a, a revised request. Um, and I think that we should wait to, to hear what that request is, because I, I, I'm, I'm not persuaded that if we gave 10,000 or 50,000 as the, uh, the Sister City Council, um, letter proposed, that, uh, it could be used to address the need at hand, which is additional months of, of warming shelter.
So if there's a clear ask in the future, there's generally support, I, I would say that for myself, I guess I'm asking, I mean.
Yeah, I, I really want to, I really want to help, but I, I want to know that, that , uh, there, there's actually a, a, a plan instead of, you know, yeah, if you throw 50,000 dollars at this, you know, maybe they'll be able to find something.
I wasn't talking about throwing 50, I said 10. I'm just worried if we do have a late winter since we're, you know, the winter hasn't gotten here yet, February, March and April, um, you know, that's three months. Think that our, uh, you know, our unit that we had from mid-Oregon sat empty for almost a year, they didn't want to rent it. I believe the annual rent for that is 25,000. I'm not sure what they are able to find in Sisters at this moment in time, if, who wants it, do they want it next door? You know, it, um, sometimes it's just a little tricky and, okay, so we're going to wait on this and I, I just feel like it's kind of, it's scary, February, March, April, it's not that far away.
I'm, I'm, I'm eager to, I'm eager to support our request whenever we get a viable plan, but, uh, the.
Well, they asked us for a million dollars, that was our first half.
Yep, and, and we, we did not support that plan and, or, you know, we, we, we haven't, we haven't supported that plan. We also haven't supported a, uh, kind of, uh, an abstract request from the city for 50,000 dollars, um, for, to, to help rent an undetermined space, which may or may not exist. Um, so, you know, in, in my mind, in the ideal world, what we would get is we would get a, uh, a proposal from, uh, the board of the organization that operates the winter warming shelter, that's supported by, uh, the, the city council of the city where the winter warming shelter would be located. Um, but we haven't gotten that. And, and so I, I don't, um, you know, I, 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 until we get a, a proposal that's viable, I, I, I don't think we can make an investment.
Well, this letter was written on October 20th, that's when they had three churches. They no longer have three churches, they only have two.
This, this letter, this letter pres.
How about, I mean, there's support for something.
Right.
Let's go, just do it again and figure out who we would write a check to and what.
Well, I just want them to truly get on something that is going to work because I worry about the winter.
Let's work with the city council on that and whoever's.
Well, no, I think it's actually the, um, the group, the Cold Weather Shelter.
I mean, it, it, uh, how about this? I mean, we could actually, we could incentivize, uh, the, the, the planning and collaboration that needs to happen, uh, by putting, you know, a, a chunk of money on the table and say, like, we're holding this for.
Thirty bucks for some coffee to have a discussion.
We're, we're, we're holding this money for you to come up with a viable plan. Do, do you want to do something like that today?
And we're talking, it's, I'm sure we have the money.
Commissioners?
It's not necessary.
If, if I might, uh, just chime in on this, so this, the conversation, I, I've actually talked with, uh, one of their board members about this and they, uh, stated that they needed to get back together as a board to discuss a plan, as Commissioner Chang's talking about, and I haven't heard back from them yet.
Yeah, so we're, it'll come around again.
And if it, and if and when it does, if this helps, you know, we can turn it around really quickly.
Yeah, good. So, yeah, there's intention of partnering with something. Okay, is there anything else? So thank you very much for.
One thing, going back to the previous item that was approved, does the board want to coordinate communication back to the City of Sisters in Lapine? Might be. Just to let them know that it was.
That's a great idea.
That would be great. Uh, do, do, are you helping yourself up to do that coordination?
I'm happy to, to communicate with the city managers or if the board wants to reach out to their elected officials, that's another option.
Let's put a little, just a paragraph together saying, we've responded to your request for a half FTE by, uh, you know, doing this with the Health Department, uh, hiring a few folks, having resources for them for the next three years. So, I mean, let's put that in a couple of sentences.
Sure, sure. And would you like that, staff can draft the email, but do you want it to come from the board or, or?
Well, I'm thinking a letter, you know, as an attachment, so, because it, I mean, it's all signed by the mayor there, we can sign it, all three of us just acknowledging that this is what, because it'll be a nice thing to look at. They're in boxes.
And I'd really like to look at if we have some land down there that we could do a similar, um, to our Veterans Village in Bend, if that's a possibility.
Uh, where?
In Lapine.
Lapine, yeah.
Lapine, there's a lot of veterans that are homeless down there and truly, um, people are asking. And if it's a successful program and if we have, you know, 100 homeless vets and we only have, you know, 15 here, if we could do, you know, get something going, what, in less than three years? Hopefully, maybe a year, since we.
Saint Vincent de Paul is doing that here in Bend also.
I know, which is great.
Yeah, I mean.
But, you know, when you, you've got 1,500 homeless, it's, it's a huge crowd. Anyway, I don't know if we have down there.
I asked, you know, um, when I, when I heard about this, this concept for the Lapine area, I asked, uh, I immediately turned around and, you know, it would need to get built and we know that's a big project, but it would also need to be operated, you know, over, you know, years and years and years. And, and so I, I immediately turned around and asked Povo, uh, you know, whether they were, um, ready to, to commit to managing an additional Veterans Village. And, uh, they, they, they said, well, you know, it's, it's a big lift, but, you know, if that kind of opportunity was there, they, they would, they would figure out how to do it.
Well, it's got to be easier having 15 people in one location versus, you know, you know, driving around the community in the forest, you know, talking to people and actually getting them more services. Um, I really, I'm really thrilled that Veterans Village is open. Thank you to the Tobiason family.
And the Ben Hillas Foundation.
Going back to the communication to the cities, we'll draft a letter that the board can review on Monday. Also, Whitney actually has a draft press release that can go out today if the board would like, or we could hold off on it. Is there a preference?
Uh, well, so, uh, press release, and let's go ahead and just, uh, acknowledge it in the minutes on Monday, but let's put a letter out today, too, if we can. I mean, we should be able to get something together in the next hour, it's just a couple sentences acknowledging it. In, in line with the press, because then we can email it to the city councils, too, it'd be fun. It'd be positive.
Yeah, we'll draft.
Very positive.
We'll draft the letter and send the press release to the.
Yep.
To the cities.
And then we'll acknowledge the letter in the minutes on Monday.
Sounds good.
It's Friday almost at noon. Okay, anything else? Got through that one.
Your decision on the 50,000?
Uh, no action at this time for Sisters Warming Shelter, but, uh, shown support of something.
Yeah, but, and we're outreach-ing to the city council of Sisters to, to say that, that we're ready to invest, we, we need, uh, you know, in, in my mind, we need a unified plan from both the people who are operating the, the winter warming shelter and the, the city that will be hosting it.
Yeah, perfect, great, thank you.
Okay.
Any, the only other item there is the, the list that's attached to that report, if you care to walk through any of those items or not.
Not today, I'm not ready for that either, yeah. At some point, we'll start doing that again. And we, we need time like this. I mean, maybe we set up another ARPA discussion outside of a board meeting, or if we don't have a busy Wednesday afternoon sometime, just come back, I have a second half of the day and just kind of open this up slowly and then get to something.